So municipal vulnerability plan?
Yeah, the town is applying for two grants. The first one is $4,000 from the planning funds to pay consulting firm GZA to help depart -- department put together an application to the state EOEA, Municipality Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant Program. It's a grant to get more detailed vulnerability assessment information for the town's entire wastewater system. That includes the treatment plant, pump stations. It builds on a priority action to address vulnerability of municipal infrastructure outlined in the town's recently approved Municipal Vulner- Vulnerability Preparedness Plan. It should be very competitive because there's only a few coastal towns that are currently MVB certified and are thus eligible to apply for the grant. So he's asking for a letter of support and so there's, we have a letter, we have a letter for you to sign if you so, if the board agrees. And then a second is a letter of support for-
Well, just on the first one, Karen, I talked to Brad about it and, you know, the first request is to, is to put $4,000 out of the planning budget to supplement this thing and, and then ask for the letter of support. And I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to hear that. I think from the point of view of supporting, you know, planning activity, it sounds like a perfect fit from my point of view and I just thought everybody else should have a chance to really think that through.
It also will segue into the master plan?
Yes, very nicely into it.
Well, it will. So-
And we do have, we have $6,000 right now in technical money that we can use and we can use the rest of it for stormwater.
Right, and it's, and that's through June 30th?
That's through June 30th, so, I mean-
That makes sense.
Do you want a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Um, why don't we have a motion?
Move to expend $4,000 from Technical Services to fund the vulnerability preparedness grant application.
And to provide a letter of support?
And to provide a letter of support, thank you.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
All right, the second one is a letter of support for another grant that the town is going after from Energy and Environmental Affairs. It's Planning Assistance Grant. This grant is to get funding to support a planning process to engage with the business owners, property owners, and residents of Situate Harbor to discuss short and long-term resiliency for the harbor. This builds out another priority identified in the MVB plan to address vulnerability of our coastal business districts. And again, it's going to segue right into the master plan as well.
I for one would be in great support of that.
Do they need money?
No, just a letter.
This one needs just a letter.
This is an application for money from, from EOE.
All right. Move to support the Planning Assistant Grant, Assistance Grant.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, so at the end of the meeting, when we do the signing, we'll have you sign the letter and that'll go out then.
Okay.
So, so thank you very much.
Okay. Form A 29 Long Meadow Road.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Gregory Morris. I'm a registered engineer with Morris Engineering representing the BTZ Two Realty Trust. Leo C. Costello, Jr., the trustee of the property. This is a form aid plan to redivide the trust's property off of Long Meadow Road. Long Meadow Road is at the bottom of the page here, the cul-de-sac on Long Meadow Road, that location. The property has been developed before the applicant owns it, as number 29 Long Meadows depicted. What we're doing is we're proposing to redivide the property into three separate buildable lots. Lot one is the existing house, has frontage of 100.02 feet. Lot two would be a new construction lot. It's in excess of two acres in size and it has 125 feet of frontage. Lot three is approximately six acres in size and has 205 feet of frontage. Long Meadow Road is a public street recognized by the town park. This is in the R2 or half acre zoning district, so the lots greatly comply with the lot area requirements.
Um, the plan does have frontage, each one of the lots have frontage and access, so the planning board should endorse the plan. It should be just noted that on Lot Three, I believe it is, they do have a limited project entrance into the site from the Conservation Commission, and that's how access is planned to Lot Two. But the wetland there does not prohibit you from endorsing the plan?
Why do you have a red tail?
Sure. We have really good soils in this location for a septic system.
Love those red tails.
And what's the, was this the Fieldstone Road? Was that just something that was on?
Yeah, Fieldstone Road was a road that was never constructed at this portion. The applicant owns all of the fee interest of that road and the lots on either side of it.
Any questions?
No.
Motion?
I move to endorse as approval not required, plan of land showing a division of land off of Long Meadow and Fieldstone Roads in Situate, Mass. Assessors' parcels included 27-6-20, 27-6-54, 27-6-55, 27-6-56, 27-6-57, 27-6-58, 27-6-59, 27-6-60, 27-6-61, 27-6-62, and 27-6-63, prepared by Morris Engineering Company, Inc., and Moran Surveying Incorporated for applicant BTZ Two Realty Trust and owner Fox Run Two Realty Trust and BTZ Realty Trust dated 4/26/18. As the division of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision, every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Situate zoning board on Long Meadow Road.
I second that. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay. A couple more minutes? Do you count?
I move to approve the requisition of $223.05 to Amory Engineers PC for construction engineering inspections for Blanchard Farms, for $1,083 to Chesia Consulting Services for stormwater review for 31 Torres Lane, and for $1,170 to Merrill for stormwater review for 115 Grove Street.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, minutes. One set of minutes, right?
Yep. Move to approve, Situate Planning Board Meeting, minutes from April 26, 2018.
Second?
All those in favor?
Hi.
We have on our plates?
EDC met last night and we're distributing money. We're going to fund $10,000 for Heritage Days. It's their 50th anniversary. We're also looking into the feasibility of working on the sign out on Tri-A because it is the site of a disaster. We're looking at, we're funding the harbor, putting together a pocket park. We want to try to get a few things done before the summer season, so we're busy, very busy.
Hurry up, it felt like summer last week.
Yeah, well, now it's this week.
Anything else?
Oh, I thought I went, sorry, I was signing that. I attended the advisory committee meeting regarding kind of debriefing from the marijuana zoning and general bylaws. So they just kind of wanted to have, there was a lot of confusion at town meeting because like the report that went out to the citizenry was different than the second night they had revoted the previous night, so they wanted to clarify procedurally what went on and it had involved a potential ethics complaint that somebody had made, so they had, a member had to recuse himself and then they reviewed, voted, and there were some members that were absent that night and other members that were present, so it got all messed up and no one actually changed their vote. So they wanted to just clarify that and be on the record. And then it was kind of an interesting discussion. A citizen of the town who's a cannabis attorney came and presented his arguments as well as members of the FACS Coalition and it kind of, the debate continued and at the end the advisory board basically decided that it would make sense to ask the selectmen to convene a committee to study potential changes to the zoning moratorium in the future, so that's something that might, may or may not be happening as a new committee-
Moratorium, it's a ban.
Yeah, sorry, a ban, yeah.
What were the two differences between the different, the town meeting? You said there were two different votes?
The, yeah, the published report, the vote of the advisory committee was different than what was reported at the second night, so there was a revote. The town meeting was two nights and there was a revote the evening of town, of night one of town meeting, so.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, we have everybody here and it's just about seven, so why don't we get started? This is a continued public hearing for the residential cluster special permit, C-Side in Situate. We have a whole host of people here.
Yes.
I'll let you all introduce yourselves again.
Thank you. Bill Aronberger, I'm here with Jeff DeLeese tonight. To my right is Dave Bauer from Toll Brothers, I got also Dave Buckley from Toll Brothers. Also with us tonight is our environmental consultant Jim Ash, our drainage engineer Kevin Klein, and traffic engineer Ellen Freda. Okay? And just before we start, just a brief update is at the, on Monday, we had the Conservation Commission meeting and we anticipate at the next meeting, a week from Monday, that the orders will actually be voted and signed. And what has happened is similar process, they had a number of conditions at the last meeting, we reviewed the conditions in there, you know, basically blacklining, putting them together, similar to the process which you folks have been, so that's basically where we are in this. And as you probably know, we've exchanged some various and sundry drafts and I think other than a very small number of language things, I think Karen did an excellent job on this as usual and we're in good stead.
Great. Why don't we, why don't we jump right into what we've got to do here and see if we can be as efficient as possible? How would you suggest doing this? Do this as a page turn?
I would do this as a page turning thing from the decision that is dated today, 5/10/18. Along with that is an email from Jeff that highlights some of the, some of the points and the conditions that they want to go over, but I want to point out that nothing was voted last time, we discussed everything last time and-
All right.
What we did for, why did I just tell you what we did in the findings of fact? We clarified based on that surveyor's memo that we had last time.
Yep.
So the red numbers in the findings of fact are based on the surveyor's, the surveyor's memo for the project areas and in finding of fact number four, we clarified that the 51.428 acres is upland because Horsley Witten had wanted the upland area known and that's why, that's, I mean, that's why it's different from the 55 acres of the project area because of the wet, the wetlands were subtracted out to get the upland. And that is reflected on the cover page of the, of the plans.
Okay. So the first set of edits I see in that are in item two, which are adjusting the acreages accordingly, is that right?
Yes.
Could I ask just one point of clarification? Because we have the five-seven draft in front of us. Karen, as we go through the, as we go-
Five/10.
Okay.
Yeah, as we go through the five/10, could you just point out to us just if they're, what the differences are, as we get to them chronologically, that's all.
So you have a previous draft?
Yeah, we have, that's, it's just handed to us as draft, we don't have-
So we're working off the one dated 5/10/18? And you all have a copy of that?
We just got it.
Just now? But you have it?
Yes, yes, we do.
All right, so there's color coding in this first one, I believe, of red and green. And the green language we added just after a meeting this week and it just clarifies of the 55 acre town home property, 51.428 acres is not located in with wetlands, the same clarification that is made down before in number four.
I get it covered. Okay, I understand what you're doing.
So are there, are you fine with this?
We're fine, yes.
Okay. So the next one I see, it looks like F.
F. I made an edit today based upon a meeting that Mr. Aronberger and Bob Vogel and myself had this morning because we're going to remove something in a condition and we're just stating a pure fact in the findings that occupancy of the clubhouse will be based on the Situate zoning bylaw. That's what the building commissioner would, would like to say and that's, that's just pure fact.
Is that maximum occupancy or is that, I'm not sure-
He determines occupancy based on several different things. I mean, he determines occupancy, my understanding, based on parking spaces, based on doors, that kind of stuff, so that's, that his, it's his call on occupancy and so-
But when you say occupancy, you're talking about maximum occupancy?
I think that's what he-
Or occupancy limits, if you-
Yeah, yeah.
So could we add the word limits?
Sure.
That's the answer to the parking space, like, for occupancy.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Dave Bauer with Toll Brothers. We discussed quite a bit that in this setting, in this particular instance, a good number of residents, we believe, will be walking to the clubhouse, so I guess I'm just curious if the occupancy is dictated by a calculation based on parking spaces.
What happens, Dave, this isn't a condition.
Yep.
This is just a finding.
Yep.
So it's not a condition.
Got it, so it'll just be a question of how the bylaws-
Correct, yes.
It's when you submit the plans, the building inspector will determine what the occupancy is at the time, so-
Right, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, and I see in G we put little b and little p on pots and pickle cords.
Oh, we got a problem.
Oh, it's better than, it's better than Ochi and Echol.
Under the finding, it looks like there were some, just editorial changes there?
Editorial changes on J, the finding, just clarification.
And, stop me if you need to, let's see, that's easier to do electronically than-
I believe that's all the corrections in the findings of fact.
Now we're at the decision.
Okay. Okay, then on the decision, item number one, we added the phrase "a master set of building elevations," do you think it's consistent with what we discussed?
Yeah, we have, and again, if it's easier for sake of this, we're all set with all the language, the first discussion point is condition number 12.
Okay, just want to make sure my board members have seen, see if they have any. In six and seven, I think that's just an editorial change.
Right, the red, the red was what we agreed upon at the last meeting.
Right.
So that's, that's what, that's what the red generally is. The green, as you'll see later on, is the applicant's proposed wording. Blue is new stuff that was added between afterwards, based on review of the, all the comments.
And green is?
The applicant's proposed wording, so some stuff that is going to require your discussion.
Okay, so we're on to item number 12, which I think is the first item on Mr. DeLeese's list?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not sure I understand. It looks like noise and air monitoring?
Well, I can speak to that if you would like, all right. So what, first it was more of a question is because at the, at the, at the last meeting, the red language, the monthly and less more frequently was worked out. Our impression was that what we're really just getting at is we have a provision that deals with baseline and noise monitoring anyhow. What I'm really questioning is the reason for number 12. The reason it said is under 38K, that specifies all the RAM plan, air monitoring things, all of which we went over, so I'm just wondering the reasoning for this. If you look at 38F, correct, no, did this get remumbered? About 38K, excuse me. I can't read my own writing. 38K, that's, gets into what the air quality monitoring is, we went through that with great specificity.
We relist, we relistened to the tape and we found that you were definitively on monthly and unless more frequent reports needed, we didn't fathom that there was a definitive decision to take out noise, so that's why we thought it should be discussed tonight.
So you're proposing the deletion of noise?
Well, well, what I'm just saying is the first sentence is "an independent third-party inspector employed through the town shall perform the required construction inspection according with section nine of the subdivision regulations." Yes, that makes sense. And then "all required inspections shall take place and be inspected by the inspector including water and sanitary sewage facility," that's yes, but, and then, then the next sentence, "the third, third-party inspector employed for the town DPW shall work with the town planner," that's all fine up to there, but the next sentence, and then, and then the next sentence is "noise near quality monitoring shall be, shall be required." I think that that's stricken and the rest of it, "monthly reports required, blah, blah, blah." The reason I say that is because we have a very thorough baseline noise requirements anyhow and, and 38K covers all the air quality things, so other than those, whatever.
It was really to apply to reporting as opposed to the requirement though. Do we miss, in other words, noise and air quality monitoring reporting shall also be required? I thought that's what that sentence was really intended to address, because we define the type of monitoring that needs to be done.
Well, I missed, whatever linguistically, if it says, if it says "air quality monitoring shall also be required in accordance with section 38K," I'm fine with that because that sets forth exactly what that is.
Yeah, no, I, I guess this is not, I didn't think this was a require, sort of a repeat of the requirement, it was an extension of the, the thought process about providing reports.
Yeah, but you have a 38K-
Doesn't really address that.
On, on air quality, it does, it certainly does.
I, I think if I am listening to this correctly, what Mr. Aronberger wants to do is to take out "noise and air quality monitoring shall be required," wants to remove that one sentence, and then keep "monthly written reports, if any, shall be submitted" because we're referring back to 38K, which covers air quality and so on.
Right, and it also covers prior in that sentence, anything to do with the required subdivision regulation inspections or the water sewer, sanitary sewage facility, it covers all of that stuff. And under 38K, it sets forth what the frequency and all of that is.
Does it set forth the frequency of reporting?
That's in 12, isn't it?
No, for air quality monitoring is what I'm saying.
Air quality monitoring and, Jim, I don't know if you can speak to this, that 38K?
So 38K does not prescribe the reporting to the town, so the suggestion that the line about noise and air quality monitoring shall also be required being stricken, that then makes the details of K be appropriate and then monthly written reports, if any, can stay, because that's the only place that the frequency of reporting is specified. And that, that would eliminate, as you suggested, that would eliminate this apparent redundancy of report, of air quality monitoring reports. When one is unspecific and one is specific, just delete that one sentence, it seems to accomplish the goal.
So you're saying under K, it's already covered, Jim?
I'm saying under K, the details of how to do it are covered.
Yeah, the frequency's not, and I think the idea here was that there's all kinds of reports that get submitted, but we wanted to be clear that noise and air quality monitoring reports should be submitted as well, okay? So we could move that to some other section. I, I think we dropped the word "reports" or whatever in that one sentence, right? It says "noise and air quality monitoring shall be required," we know that, right?
Right.
But it's, "noise and air quality monitoring reports shall be required as well, right? So also be required and they should be monthly reports, right? Unless-
If required later herein or something, PL.
Or all required.
So I understand that the air quality monitoring is covered in 38K, but nowhere in 38K does it say anything about noise.
39 is noise.
39, okay, so-
Well, I think, I think what I'm getting at is 38K and I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Mash-
Yes.
Was correct in saying it specifies what kind of monitoring needs to be done, it just doesn't specify how frequently they report on it, and I just think we should have that.
But do we need to have that one sentence? Noise and air quality monitoring show-
Monitoring reports will, shall also be required, that's what I'm saying.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
That we say something like, "in the event that air quality or noise monitoring is applicable, then these things will be included in the monthly reporting," meaning we're going to be doing monthly reporting, but there will be periods of time where we're not monitoring air because we're done with the remediation and we're not in that 30-day window. So we're reporting every 30 days and in the event that there is applicable air monitoring or noise monitoring happening, those will be included in the, or captured by the 30-day reports.
I don't think that's much different than other required inspections in terms of once the work is done, then obviously we don't need reports on it.
My concern is that the way it's written right now could be misconstrued down the road to suggest that there needs to be a new mobilization of noise and air quality monitoring every month-
On a monthly basis.
Rather than saying, "if noise and air quality monitoring is occurring in accordance with sections 38 and 39, these things will be captured in the monthly reporting."
Right. Will be reported on, on a monthly basis.
What if you took the-
They're applicable.
The sentence that starts with "monthly written reports, if any, shall be submitted," you, that, that whole sentence, and just move it to right before or after, on 38K, the actual level established in the RAM plan, then have the sentence, and then finish it with "the town shall be notified immediately if there's an exceedance of any alert or action level." So basically insert that sentence in between the RAM plan, period, and then the last sentence, so it would state, "the system will include a paging system to notify the engineer of any exceedance of any alert level or action level established in the RAM plan, period. Monthly written reports, if any, shall be submitted to the applicant and the planning board stating results of any and all required inspections during construction unless more frequent reports are needed, period. The town shall be notified immediately if there's an exceedance of any alert or action."
But we need the, we need the monthly written reports for all the other stuff, we need-
No, 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 but, but I agree with-
Just duplicating language.
Just duplicating the order.
Hold on, if, Richard, I, yes, that works for the air quality. I agree. And I guess that's that. As long as, with the, with the, I just want, get the "Air and noise quality monitoring shall be required", get that word out of there. The whole rest of that is fine for all other inspections. Then what I'm saying is, under the K, the language you had, now we have air in addition to that, air quality during this period of time has come, and then let's look at noise. And if we need a sentence in 39, let's deal with it there. That's all I'm saying.
Why don't you just take air, noise and air quality, move that and say that, after the monthly written reports, put it right there and say, "As per 38K."
And 39?
And 39.
I think that's what, uh, what you were suggesting before, right?
Yeah, in other words, to say "as required", uh, just say "if required" under 38K, uh, and, and same thing. Noise and air quality monitoring reports.
Per.
You know, uh, per 38K and 39 below, and then just continue.
Shall be provided.
Yeah, 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 shall be required, uh, you know.
Shall also be required.
Right, so let, let's just, let's just.
Noise and air quality monitoring reports per 38K and 30, in Section 38K and Section 39 below shall also be required.
Just say, you know, in accordance with that, you know, in other words, if they require it, they require it. That's, that's what I'm getting at.
Said per, that's not good enough. It has to be in accordance with.
Yeah.
Word smithing is so much.
Why use less words when you can use more? You're going to get paid by the pound.
Or by the letter.
By the letter, right.
I think that handles that.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So one more, one more time, Richard, uh, Steve?
Noise and air quality monitoring reporting in accordance with Section 38K and Section 39 below shall also be required.
And then continue with that, monthly written reports?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's good.
And is during construction okay?
Yeah.
Or did you want, was that?
They wanted, no, you're right, they wanted to add during construction.
Right.
You are absolutely correct, yes.
Shall also be required during construction.
Okay. 14, what's on?
Okay, um, condition 14?
Yeah, the, the commentary on that, because we were kicking back and forth this, and just, I, I think there's just a, a very simple, the blue language is great because that tracks what that is. And the only question which we'd have to, because we're getting clarification, what, the purpose of this is you want engineering certification that the grades and drainage are correct, or if there's any deviation, that it doesn't affect it. That's the purpose of that, correct?
Of what, of the whole section?
Yeah.
Well, the certification of roadway.
Well, well, yes, all, you, you want to make sure that everything's proposed, is built substantially in the condition, or if there's a little deviation, that it, that it works the way it's intended to work.
Yes.
Is that a synopsis?
Yeah, we want to know that somebody who's qualified to do so has reviewed that.
Understood.
And if there is a deviation, that they've reviewed the deviation, right? And if it's immaterial, they'll tell us that. If it's material, then I would assume they would tell us that as well.
Right, so the caveat, just by striking a few words, it's the same thing. As we get to the fourth sentence, is the engineer shall inspect each building and certify? Or we would just suggest, get rid of inspect each building and, and to say, "The engineer shall certify." It's because what our engineers pointed out to us, the land surveyors are the, are the folks who are out on the site, drawing the as-bills and doing all that. And what the engineers do is they review the as-bills and the slopes and everything to make sure they're correct. They said, "An engineer on site, although they may be on site eyeballing something, means nothing. They want to see the math." And so, it's just, "The engineer shall certify" to the Planning and Building Commission or that blah, blah, blah. All the language is fine, it's just a technical thing, as our engineers pointed out to us, is that they're certifying based on the mathematics and the certified plans.
But what are you changing?
The certified plans.
Right, but, but, but.
So they're ultimately responsible, so we want whoever's ultimately responsible to sign off on this thing, even if other people are working for them.
No, 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 you get it.
It's kind of.
You're not getting me wrong.
Yeah.
I agree with you. All I'm just saying is that, in some instances, it isn't necessary for an engineer to actually be physically on-site inspecting a building. If you say, "The engineer shall certify".
Strike the words.
Inspect each building.
Of each building.
Inspect each building and, so it just says, "The engineer shall certify." So now you have the, the engineer and, as it says up front, you have a land surveyor and an engineer. Apply to walk into a building, the professional engineer shall certify.
To the planning board.
Could, exact same language, all the rest of it's fine.
So, so you effectively want us to remove the requirement to physically inspect?
Just, just for the engineer. It's because what the engineers are telling me is that they're out there with great frequency, but what their, what their certification is based on is the mathematics. Their eyeball, looking at how something looks, doesn't mean anything to them. What it means is what the calculations and what the certified survey plans tell them.
Right.
Am I saying that correctly?
Don't they physically review?
They should physically review the as-built plan, that the surveyor has to stamp, the engineer has to review it.
Elevation, they can rely on.
We're agreeing with you, right?
The surveyor will go out and measure everything in the field, get all the elevations, and stamp a plan saying, "Here's the as-built finished grading." The engineer doesn't, I mean, I can't go out and look at a site and tell you that's 5% slope versus 3%. Look at the plan. It's got all the grades right on it, and then we can determine if the water sheds are the same as shown on the plans, or if the grades are the same, if water's going in the same direction, and tell you, based on the plan provided by the surveyor, that, yeah, it's still working the same way we designed it.
Seems to me that that's what the sentence says.
Well, well, let me, let, let, let me, just the clarification. So if you want to say, "Shall inspect the exterior of each building as shown on the plan", just, if you want to say, "Exterior of each building as shown on the plan and certify."
No, we, sorry to interrupt, but, but we, we do want to make it clear that the requirement is not for an engineer to get in his or her car and drive out to the site every time.
But.
They just need to certify. Certify means a lot.
Right, well, I guess, again.
But this is only at the end. I mean, there's going to be a supervising engineer out there most of the time. We're just asking for the certification at the end.
No, 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 this says every single building, Karen. This says every single.
You're right, I mean, you're going to have to. You're right, because the way this is being done, it has to be, every building has to be done, and I.
But that, why wouldn't that be the case, though?
We're saying we will do it, we're going to certify it. The certification is going to be based on as-built plans provided by the surveyor on site with his eyeballs.
Who does the surveyor?
To the, to the, to the physical engineer.
Who does the surveyor work for? The engineer? The supervising engineer?
But we, we would contract a surveyor, or we would contract an engineer that would subcontract a surveyor. But the language could say, "A licensed surveyor shall inspect each building and provide a stamped survey, which the engineer shall use to certify that the buildings were built." Rather than create a duplicative.
The way I read this is, eh, the, what we're, the end goal is the, in red, signature and stamp on the as-built.
And that's all fine.
And, and that's fine. But what he or she does in between doesn't really matter.
You're right.
But that's not what we're asking for. It's just saying, inspect the exterior, I mean, and then ultimately, it's the signature and stamp. So if he doesn't, he or she does nothing, it's the, the signature and stamp is what we're requiring.
Right, what, what I would like to avoid.
To inspect the exterior.
So why don't you just say?
Right, but.
Expect the, the, now, interior.
Will they do that anyway? I guess, that's what I'm saying, I don't understand it. It's like the end goal.
Yeah.
It's like. It seems to me they should, yeah.
Can I just suggest a couple of words and we'll figure this out? All language is there, it says, "Inspect, shall inspect the surveyor's plan of the exterior of, and then each building and certify." That's all.
I don't, I don't want to get into the, the iteration of that. I think the engineer has the ultimate responsibility to review it, certify it that everything's functioning correctly, right? And I'm, so I'm not going to micromanage him to say, "He shall inspect the surveyor's plan."
Well, that's, that's exact, well, that's.
What we're saying is, he'll, he'll inspect what's built, right? And he will certify.
Well, that, well, that's why I said at the outset, my first word, strike three words and it's fine, if you want him to certify. But what I'm saying is, you're engaging in a drill to send someone out to look at something that has nothing to do with his certification, so.
The engineer will drive out to the project and say, "I don't know why I'm here, it's in the permit, but I have to physically drive here", when all the engineer normally does is review the, the certified as-built from the surveyor, like Kevin just said. To drive out, to require specifically for them to drive out to the site, to stand there and just look at a building, it's just adding this extra trip for somebody that is not really part of a process.
So why don't you point it where it says, "Each building, as necessary or as required and certify."
Yes, that's it.
As necessary?
That's it.
As necessary, that's fine.
Okay.
If he physically needs to be there, he's there, if not, then he can look at his own.
As necessary, you're perfect.
That's well worded, because if there's an issue, then he may need to, or she may need to go out there and look at a specific issue. So as.
At the end of the day, we're expecting that a certification is right.
That's all that matters.
Absolutely.
If he didn't visit the site and inspect the site and could have got a problem, that's really his problem.
Correct, absolutely.
And that's your problem as well.
Absolutely.
We won't accept the certification at that point.
Her problem.
Yeah, and it also recognizes, from our standpoint, that he, he may need to physically be out there.
Yeah.
Correct, so as necessary is fine. That does everything.
Saves a dream.
Okay.
I, um, before we move on, I, I have a very slight change to the very last sentence in the blue language, and that's based on, uh, our, our surveyor being confused as to the word layers. So this, this sentence can, it basically requires GIS layers for utility infrastructure. And the way that he proposed would be, um, before the words "utility infrastructure", to just say, "As built, provided in CAD format for use in a GIS software um, pertaining to utility, et cetera."
So this is different from the language you gave me this afternoon?
Yes, slightly different. So, that's all. It, it achieves your goal.
Just give him the exact.
Say that again?
Okay, so.
So we're rewriting the last sentence to say what?
So, so you're going to strike the words before, all the words before "utility", so you're going to strike GIS layers for all. And you're going to say, you're going to start the sentence with, "As built plan, uh, as built data provided in CAD format for use in a GIS software pertaining to." Gets you to the same place, but.
And then what's, then what's the next word?
Well, then it goes on to say, "Utility infrastructure", and it picks up everything that.
Right, but you didn't mention those words, delete it also.
Yes, I did.
No, you just said GIS.
The sentence begins with what I read and picks up with "utility infrastructure."
As built data provided in CAD format for use, I added, "in the town's GIS software."
Okay.
For. For all utility infrastructure?
Yeah, pertaining to.
And then pick up.
And then pick up your word.
All utility infrastructure.
That's right.
You're going to have to give me that tomorrow. That, I mean, because that doesn't correspond at all with the site development as-built, including building structures, topo and roadway infrastructure, with water, sewer and drainage will be submitted in AutoCAD format 213 or higher with stamped and signed copies of said plans, which is what I thought we agreed to this afternoon.
That is what we agreed to this afternoon.
It's because the GIS system.
Second sentence that kind of deviates from that, so.
And I was planning to take the second sentence out.
Oh, if that's the case.
That's, I mean, that's what it says there, delete wording in parentheses.
Well, I'd like to make sure that what we get is compatible with whatever the town uses.
I, I confirmed that this afternoon. I, I mean, the way they had.
I want to make sure that.
The first sentence, you don't put any, you take out the parentheses, delete the wording in parentheses, and IT said this afternoon that, that should be fine.
If that's, if that's fine, then I'm good with deleting that and going with what you.
It's because they're two separate CAD systems, that's why.
That's exactly why.
Uh, like, for instance, the GIS system doesn't use AutoCAD format. They're using Esri, I'm assuming, uh, which is a different company and a different system, so.
So therefore, we need both?
No, yeah, I'm just explaining why the difference in the language.
No, we're providing the raw data, and then, and then the town will upload it into whatever software it uses.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's provide that data so that it's compatible with, and upload with the town's system. Because that, that actually, today, you know, IT may say it's this, but three years from now, it could be something else, right? So let's just make sure it's compatible with whatever the town needs when you're ready to submit it.
Okay, so, so the parenthetical comes out, then? Is that the same time?
The parenthetical comes out, and then we just add, "After AutoCAD format 213 or higher, compatible with town's system."
Perfect.
Um, so that, like Steve said, whenever we get it, you know, we'll just coordinate with each other.
If I actually said something a little different, I, I hate to belabor this, and I'm just following up with what Richard just said. It said, so, AutoCAD format is one thing, right? There's a different format for GIS.
Right.
So we need, we need as-built in, in the AutoCAD format, but we need the as-built data provided in the GIS format. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so for instance, the roadway, the infrastructure, all that will be shown on AutoCAD, but the GIS system has different data, so that's all, it just needs to be compatible with the town.
Sure.
Did you get all that, Karen?
Yep. And Jeff and I will, I will review it again with IT tomorrow, and Jeff and I will review it in the next week to make sure that both sides are okay.
Okay. On to 15, 15 okay?
Next one's 33.
Next one you have is 33. Any other, anybody have any other comments, any other changes? That's the 33. Okay, 33.
Well, 31, oh, you said no comments, okay.
33, I.
If you have a comment on 31, you can.
No, I just didn't, are they okay with everything?
Yep, we're fine.
We talked about this last time.
So this is the wording I propose on 33, to just delete now, the blue wording, delete the whole blue wording. So, it's just the black wording.
Okay. Because we covered that in the finding effect.
Right, because we covered it, exactly, so delete all that wording.
Okay. 39.
39?
Well, we're all set on 39.
Oh.
39 is okay, well.
40?
40, we never finalize, what, what the issue is on 40, as to a tree cutter, we have to be able to get the trucks on-site, get the equipment sighted. So we have to be able to cut trees for the purpose of getting all our, because the best trucking route is from Tilden Road, so coming off of Tilden Road and off of Hadley, we have to be able to clear trees to be able to have access for our, uh, equipment, machinery, and storage of construction materials.
I think the concern is that the whole piece, all 55 acres, was going to be totally clear cut.
Understood, and that's, yeah.
And that's not going to happen, we hope?
This is, this is until, 40 is the end, it's during all demolition until activities are completed. Uh, tree clearings are still good until, uh, until all demolition activities are completed. This is all we're talking about, until y'all the demolition completed. But we got to get the trucks, equipment, and we got to do something so we can stage on-site.
But doesn't that kind of, isn't that covered with the exception of localized clearing necessary for mediation activities or the installation of erosion control?
But we al, we also have to be able to have, what I was going to say, I also need, we need staging areas for trucks, machinery,
model homes.
Equipment, and, and also, would also like to start, to be able to construct. Equipment, and, and also, would also like to start to be able to construct just the model homes. Because that's way up, that's, that's not near anything.
Right. But I, I think the, I think this was written with the expectation that you need to do localized clearing first and foremost, to set up erosion control and to get the remediation activities underway.
Correct.
And then to begin the demolition, demolition process, right? So what you're, what you're asking is to do more tree clearing beyond that?
How, how do we, how do we keep the trucks out of the streets unless you have a place to put the trucks on-site?
Well, I'm assuming the trucks are related to demolition and remediation activities?
Well, we may want, for example, let's just play out a scenario where one of the buildings to be torn down runs into a delay, whatever that may be. We just run into some issue, and now we're stuck with this one building. We, there are all these other tasks we may want to start, like the model homes, we may want to get a start on those, or working on the, the, the entries in terms of trying to get them presentable. We, we're committing to not doing the clear-cutting for the entire phase until demolition is complete. That's the big, that's the big one. But we want the localized clearing to include not just that for the demolition, but some of this other, um, you know, localized clearing for things like model homes or the entryways, things like that. Not exclusively just for the demolition.
They're going to have to get in and do staging areas and, et cetera. So it seems like you could change the language to say, "Clearing necessary for remediation activities, comma, installation of erosion control measures, construction, staging areas and model home construction."
That would be perfect.
Seems reasonable?
Yep.
Maybe add construction entries.
So, yeah, entryways too, right? And it's really for remediation activities, entryways, model home, et cetera.
Staging.
Staging, that's there.
That's fine.
Number forty-eight, moving.
But, but before you do all that, right, first thing is erosion control goes up, right?
Yes.
So we just want to make sure that's clear. So next items.
Forty-eight. Forty-eight, language is, language as modified, it's fine.
Okay.
Well, um, so I just want to clarify here that, um, the green language was what they added pool initially, or when the full, full water ban is in place. They cannot-
The blue.
The blue. They can't top off the pools when a full water ban is in place.
So, um, nor do, so, we also don't want to have, in the future, the pool drained or it has a big leak or drained, and then fill it all with town water either. So to use it as maintenance to maintain levels is one thing, as long as there's no water ban, but not to do a full or, you know, sort of a material fill, if you will, of the pool.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. I don't know how they say that, though. Karen, you can figure that out?
How about after the word initially, you just say, "Or, or in a material manner subsequently."
Or what?
"Or in a material, uh, manner subsequently."
What does that mean?
"No town water may be used to fill the pool initially, or maintenance, or for maintenance when a full water ban is in place."
No, you, you missed the point.
Yeah.
They can use it for maintenance unless there's a water ban. So maintaining level, right? What we're saying is if there's sort of major maintenance, where the pool has to be materially drained, uh, then they should order water trucks to refill.
But, but used to completely fill.
That, that's why I said, sort of materially. If it's three-quarters-
That's fine.
Or it's anything other than normal maintenance, really.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fifty-seven and fifty-eight?
Uh, okay. I think, on fifty-seven and fifty-eight, uh, speaking with Karen yesterday, we realized that intelliniated in that green language, green language is what we like, but we'd strike these words. We said, "Prior to commencement of work, reinstallation of sewer means or pertinences," and the same thing with water. We realized that's in conflict with the pre-construction, so we'd delete that language and the green language is fine. So in other words, this is all prior to scheduling pre-construction conference.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Karen? That's what we were getting at.
Just we substitute the pre-construction words and the rest of the green wording will-
Yeah, so we just get rid of the "prior to commencement of the work," that's that sentence, uh, up to the word "pertinences" on both fifty-seven and fifty-eight.
It's okay with me. Anybody else? Um, sixty-three?
And I think-
That's fine, as written. Is this the first one?
Yep.
This is the first one.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we'll, we'll just agree to it as written.
Yeah, as long as the red language is in there.
Yep, we'll add-
So we've taken out the green language?
We agreed to add the red language the last time, so we'll delete the last green. Okay.
Sixty-five?
Six, sixty-five, with the principle, and I saw Karen's explanations, what we're, what we're back to on, uh, timing. With, well, we'd like to pick, and again, we'll get the interior, exterior in a second, all right? And we'd like to be able to do interior work. I noticed Karen said, as on the public projects for interior work, it's ten PM. We're fine with that as opposed to eleven PM, if that's what the town standard is. And, uh, in addition to that, this whole thing about, about seven PM or sunset, whichever is earlier, and again, it's, sunset's at four-fifty during, during the winter. You know, what we'd like to do is just to, either one or two things, either, so, you know, seven PM, we'd ask for eight PM, but if seven PM or sunset, whichever is later, or if you don't want the later, to pick a straight eight PM.
So they're going to be outrunning around in the dark in the wintertime?
What if we compromise instead of eight PM, say seven PM?
Seven to seven.
Sorry?
Yeah, yes.
I'm going back to, this is the standard we've been using for quite some time, so why, why change it? I don't know why you, I, I agree with Ann. I don't know why you'd be running around in the dark outside, um, you know, at seven or eight PM.
In the wintertime.
In the wintertime.
Seven PM is, is fine. And, and what the answer is, I think the, I think the explanation Dave had last time is, hey, if there's an electrician who's trying to put an exterior light on to finish his job because his exposed wires on the outside of a garage and it's six-thirty at night, he doesn't want to walk away.
That's, that's a pretty small end of the range, right? Once you say seven AM to seven PM, it's sort of like anything goes, right? Uh, so that's, that's why, I, I think that was the genesis of this particular, um, requirement that, that we put on everybody who comes in here.
But it's also, I think, in reality, a safety issue, that when you get into the wintertime, it's dark at four-thirty, quarter to five, and it's cold, raining, whatever. I, I just think it's a safety thing. And this is, as Steve just pointed out, this is something that we have always, always required, subdivisions, whatever, that it's over at sunset. But it gets light early in the morning. Actually, it's still dark at seven.
Well, we're, we're bound by OSHA before we're following any other safety standards, so we certainly are sensitive to safety. Um, but it, when, you say, you've always done it this way, but I, I, you know, this project, I, it sounds like is somewhat unique, the size of it, the scale of it, and we'd like to, you know, knock on wood, while the market is strong, we'd like to get it built swiftly. So there really is an efficiency lost if, you can, you know, when you're building twenty, thirty homes at a time, and you say that you can't have somebody turning a screw on the outside of a house at six-thirty because it's, you know, some technically sunset, um, that, that really impacts us on a larger scale.
Well, again, we'll allow somebody to turn a screw, right, but I-
Also, no roofing, no framing, I mean, if we are-
We draw the line, right?
Sure. Well, we could say something like-
That's the issue, right?
Could say something like, "No, um, heavy construction such as, uh, framing-"
That's it right there.
Roofing.
How about, well, no heavy exterior construction?
Excavation.
Sure, absolutely. We would not do that. Yeah, we would not be doing that after sunset. But in the summertime, at six-thirty, you know, the-
Well, you like that, so, I mean, you don't have to worry about that, right, in the summertime. This is just to sunset, right? Or, um-
We said, "No heavy, no heavy-"
No label on sunset, right?
I'd even, I'd even say, right now, it's, just as a question, because we're beyond sunset right now, and it's still pretty ample light out right now to get some work done. So dawn and dusk, you get these, this period obviously before it's really dark out.
Well, sunset allowed us to put a-
Time.
Pin on the time, right?
Right.
So, we took the, the vagueness out of it. Um, I'd be fine if we want to modify it to say, "No heavy, you know, exterior construction, et cetera."
I would agree.
Would you guys?
That's fine.
No chainsaws at seven o'clock at night.
No heavy exterior construction after sunset?
Yeah.
Right. And, but we can use the green language, "The interior work shall cease by ten PM."
Right.
Right.
That's the green language. Sorry.
Does that mean you'll be roofing at eight o'clock at night?
Hopefully not.
No.
Right, so you want seven AM-
To seven PM.
To seven PM.
Right.
Or sunset. No heavy exterior construction after sunset.
Right.
Correct.
So you want to take out whichever is earlier?
That's right.
Correct.
Okay.
So that gives them three extra hours during the winter.
Yep. And, "Interior work shall cease by ten PM."
And the town planner gets to make the decision on what is heavy construction.
So, okay, that's what goes with it. Where does it cut off?
Okay.
So on, on sixty-six-
Sixty-six.
We're, we're, we're good with the red language, but I'm just trying to figure out where the black language ends and starts, that's all.
There is no black language.
All right, so-
The entire paragraph-
All right, so we take, so the red language as proposed by the board is, is, is good with us.
Okay. Right, it's the entire red language.
Everything else comes out.
Right.
Same goes for sixty-seven.
No.
Right?
No.
Green language, right?
No.
No, sixty-seven's different.
You, you take out the second sentence of the, of the black to, and-
Yeah, so the green language-
The green.
So we, what do we take, the first sentence in the black, Karen, and then the green language?
Yes.
Okay.
Replacing the second and the third sentence with the green language, is that what we're doing?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Um, seventy-one.
And, uh, let's see. Seventy-one, the intellinions of the roads is fine. And, and again, I'm back to this, is we're okay with the red language, but what happens to green language? All right, so the red language is good? And is the, so it's the black language plus the red language?
It's the black language to Longley Road, then the red language.
All right, we're good with that.
So you're getting rid of the last sentence of the black language?
Right.
Get rid of the last sentence, the black, and you go down to the red-
Get to the red.
Which is a combination of the two.
Got it.
It's the green language and the black language. And that's based on conversations, again, with the police department.
We'll go to eighty-one when you're ready.
I'm just, I'm reading. I, I think, um, just a little wordsmithing, but on, on to seventy-one, this suggests, um, that if, if safe pass, passage is impeded, then a police detail, detail would be obtained. And we don't want to be in the situation where we've already created the problem. So it, it really should be incumbent upon you to identify what might create a safe passage problem, and give pre-notice to the police department and discuss that. I don't, I don't want to be in the middle of a truck stuck in an intersection somewhere and then, you know, suddenly asking for a police detail. So I, I just think you need to reword that a little bit.
I, I guess I would, I would say, what's the, the purpose for even having, I, I would think that it's covered with the acceptance of the language in sixty-six, right? I mean, if we're already under an obligation to notify you-
Yeah.
Then what's the purpose of the language in seventy-one? And doesn't that answer, doesn't that put the onus on us to identify in advance?
Yeah, sixty-six definitely does that. So I'm just saying, we may, this may be duplicate in some way.
It was slightly duplicate, but, uh, sixty-six, um, is intended, you know, that if it's, if they have a significant, um, that could cause a safety hazard, then in a, then the police detail is necessary to ensure safe passage. Um, you know, if they, it's also to identify construction roots, too. That's the, that's why, um, that's why this part is in the, the latter half of seventy-one.
Okay.
It basically says the same thing.
Yeah, as long as we have-
But, I mean, it's, it's the roots.
An obligation to notify the police ahead of time, I guess.
If they don't, a neighbor will.
Well, the police also-
It's safe upon them.
The police drive around and check, too. And so that when they know a project is coming, they, they, they check.
Okay. Uh, moving on to eighty-one.
Just to clarify, are we leaving it the way it is, then?
Yeah.
The, the reason to, it's just more of a legal technical thing, all right? The actual deed restriction is in the master deed, which is a deed, which is already been reviewed by town council. So the language, which is added to the eight, to the end of eighty-one, is fine. A more technical thing, which we request, and this is the reason why, this is, this whole section is required prior to issue of occupancy permits, okay? And what it basically says is that we're going to record the master deed. What we'd like is an exclusion, that we could get an occupancy permit for the model homes, the sales office and the clubhouse. And the reason for that is, you don't want to file the master deed, and there's a simple reason for this. The model homes, until they're going to be sold, aren't included in the master deed, because all of a sudden, if you have model homes that are there for five years, it requires that you start to pay condominium fees every single month for something that's not occupied for someone. So-
Don't need the clubhouse.
Oh, okay, we don't need the clubhouse, so scratch that. So, in other words, so the language is fine, just when it says, when the header to that section where it says, "Required prior to issuance of occupancy permits," and we just ask for buildings other than for, the four- ask for buildings other than four, the four model homes and sales office. And then the rest of it is, is written, is fine.
So just add excluding model homes and sales office at the end?
Yeah.
Don't need, yeah, that works. And it's specifically, it's the four that are?
Correct.
Do you want me to say four model homes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, with that in mind, 84 is the same provision for the trust, so in the parenthetical language on the second thing where it says model homes, we should probably put four in there also.
So clubhouse here or not?
No, we don't, we don't need it.
Okay, we'll take that out.
Yep.
Okay.
The reasoning for the opening language in 89 is, brought to attention, is under, uh, in, as far as the, the agreement to build the ball fields with sprinkler fields, provide money for the water study and bathrooms and other miscellaneous things, we have to wait the, just to remind you, although you folks, under your special permit, have a 20-day appeal period, the conservation commission by law has a 60-day appeal period. So as a practical matter, the, the convey, the, the transfer of the ownership of this property does not occur until that 60-day expiration period happens. And before that 60-day expiration period, though, there's a whole boatload of things that need to be done before, uh, pre-construction hearings and all that, so that, this time period will be a very busy time period to get everything up to snuff so they can hit the ground running and have satisfied all the town's requirements up to that point, as set forth in this decision.
This is, this applies to an agreement you're going to strike with the board of selectmen?
Correct. And the other, the other caveat, which we'd agree to, it says enacted within 60 days of expiration, we're willing to say, we're confident we've done with, say, 45 days, is if you want to reduce that 60 to 45 days, we can do that. And we, we plan to do it a lot quicker than that, because we're at the very end right now anyhow, but that, this just basically has to do with, the agreement has to be vetted by town council, and I don't have any control over how, with, what alacrity town council will review something.
What does 15 days gain you?
Huh?
I said, what, what's the additional days gain you?
Uh, I'm sorry, Bill, I didn't hear you.
What does the additional days gain you, 45 to 60?
Uh, no, what I'm saying is, we'll cut it from 60 to 45, we're fine with that.
I think what it gains, from our perspective particularly, what we'd like to do is for the town to get on with the comprehensive water and wastewater capacity study.
Agreed.
So, the sooner the better. And if that means that some of this, whatever this mitigation money is?
Sure.
Is, has to be thought of more as a development activity, then that's what it is. But, you know, part of, part of what we wanted to try to make sure got accomplished here is that we got through this analysis to address future requirements or future developments. So, I, you know, I would much, I'd rather make that 20, if we could make it 20, from the perspective of doing the water and wastewater capacity study.
Steve, why don't we make it 30?
Okay, I'll go with 30.
Compromise, I love compromise.
And, and just for the board members here?
And you have to call town council if we're having, if they're up against something.
I'm happy, I'm happy to call town council. They'll listen to me just like they listen to you.
Okay.
So, so up above, is 60 days still there, but it's now 30 days?
We'll make it 30 days.
But then, okay, what, the funding shall be provided within 45 days, is that still okay?
No, no, it's, it's?
They're both 30.
It's, the red language down below is gone.
Okay.
The only, the language is that, the red language up top, that will be enacted within 30 days of expiration of all municipal appeal periods. That's how, that's how it'll read. With the rest of the black language. And all the red, the red, the red language down below is out.
Okay, so just, well, let me just make sure everybody here hears what, at least I've heard, I think you sent an email.
I sent an email, yes.
Is that, um, we were told by the town administrator that the water and wastewater study is the top priority, other than the development of the ball field as part of the mitigation activity. And so they're, they're committed to doing this study. And, and so, you know, what we're really modifying here on 89 is less certainty on that, but with the commitment of the town administrator and, and the board of selectmen that they're gonna take on and study, right? Because the second sentence or the second paragraph makes this more of a requirement than the first part of that paragraph, right? Because it says that they may include a comprehensive study. Is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted you all to know that, I think Karen, Karen got that feedback from the town administrator. I talked to the town administrator later, and he relayed to me that this was their top funding priority, um, the mitigation agreement. So I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with this, with that level of commitment.
Do we need to do appendix A? No, wait a minute, what's on that?
Um, yeah, you're correct.
We can finalize that afterwards, if that's okay with you guys. We'll go back through, we'll go, we'll redouble check that, we, we do?
Yep.
You double check what?
These things to be reported.
Sure, yeah. Whatever needs to be reported, they just need to be exhibited, the special permit. Obviously change registry deeds to land court.
Well, we put registry deeds or land.
Okay, we've had a chance to walk through that all.
Yep.
And I just want to make sure, if anybody here from public has any comments, that they have an opportunity to use that. No?
Do you want a motion?
Love a motion.
I move to approve the findings of fact as written, discussed, and amended on the 5, 10, 18 draft decision.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
4-1.
4-1.
Okay.
I move to approve the special permit for residential cluster development known as Seaside at Situate by Toll Brothers with the following conditions as discussed and amended on the 5, 10, 18 draft decision.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
4-1, okay.
Uh, we've got one more.
What?
I move to close the public hearing for Seaside at Situate residential cluster development.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't think there's any opposition to that?
No.
Okay, great.
I'd like to thank, thank the majority of the board, thank you very much for your long efforts in this, and particularly Karen has been great to work with, and look forward to working, have a good evening, everyone.
Yeah, let's.
Thank you.
Thanks, Austin. The minimum of angst.
Can I get up and walk around, or can you move to adjourn?
Um, we can move to adjourn.
I, I, I just want to ask about, if you have comments on the names.
Hold it, hold it, before we, before we?
Yep.
We're gonna take a break?
Break.
Okay, so we're off the record right now?
Yep.
Before we, before we all, we're trying to scatter to the four wins, Richard had a comment, so?
Well, I just, I was a little bit surprised, so I just wanted to hear your comments.
Oh, um, I mean, a lot of my decision didn't have to do with a lot of, a lot of how I feel about this has, goes back to the purpose, and I'm not convinced that it is superior to the conventional subdivision, given a lot of the control that we have through our subdivision rules and regs to, to kind of work with this, and I think that it kind of falls short of what the purpose and intent of the design was, and then the thing I still can't get over is that our, is, is really the deed restricted 55 and over private community. It's our only RC district, and I think that there's a lot of ways with more modern kind of zoning and development that RC districts can be an asset, and I don't know if, in my opinion, this is not going to necessarily be an asset to the neighborhood, but, we all have different opinions.
Okay, well, that's good, I know, I wanted to hear that.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any other items on our agenda? You have, we actually left the plant, town planner report to last, so.
Yes, um, so, they are going to be closing on Curtis Estates this week supposedly, and then I've tentatively scheduled a date for the pre-construction conference the week after. They want to know if after the closing, but prior to the pre-construction conference, they can just physically go in and move the house to an existing, to another, just pick it up and move it over, no other work, just move the house.
To where?
Just push it over so it's not gonna be?
Where the road's going. Because it was in the middle of the road.
Right, they, right, so.
Push it to the field.
Prior, prior to the pre-construction conference.
So they're just gonna put it on railroad ties?
They're gonna put it on railroad ties.
The schoolhouse was for a long time.
Right, and, and move it over.
And there's no grading or?
No, it's gonna sit, it's gonna sit on these ties for a while, until the road gets done and sort of the lot gets, um?
And they?
But you cannot, I mean, when, it's hard to schedule house movers, is what they tell me, and so that's why they're asking for this permission. If, if everything goes like they think it's going, they're gonna close on the 15th, and we've tentatively, tentatively set the pre-construction for the 23rd, provided they get everything in 48 hours in advance.
And they think they're gonna get the house moved before then?
Yeah. I, I don't know if that's true, I mean, a reality or not, but they, they, I said I would ask the board tonight since we were having, having a meeting.
What difference does it make, really? Steve, what do you think?
I'm just trying to figure out what, what physical work they'd be doing and how it might impact, you know, whatever their construction requirements are.
They'd just be driving in the driveway, loading the house up?
Jacking it up.
Jacking it up on, and moving it on these railroad ties and moving it over to, kind of like the field area.
Right, they have to disconnect everything, right? You can't move it without disconnecting everything, right?
Right.
Power, water.
Oh, some stuff's already been disconnected, apparently, had they had not, there was a, there was an incident there apparently, as well, with, uh?
There's no water there, yeah, it hasn't been for several years.
No, there was water there, it flooded.
Definitely, yeah.
So, you know, there's been, I, I, we think, I don't know.
And the place it's going would not impact wetlands or anything else?
Right, right.
I mean, as long as there aren't material sort of impacts, that they literally can do that without having to put in stormwater, you know, erosion control measures and those kinds of things.
Well, they're not digging a hole.
Right, they're not digging a hole.
No, they're not, do, and it's all pretty flat where they're gonna plop it, so, all what they?
I don't know what they're doing, so.
They're just saying they're moving the house.
I would imagine. And that can mean a lot of things, so, there's no heavy equipment coming in at all?
Well, yeah, there would be.
Oh, yeah.
There would, there would be heavy, there would be some type of machinery to, to, to jack it up on the?
Well, those are just jacks, though.
Yeah, but then they need a truck.
I would think there's excavation, too.
Well, it'd be left with a hole.
Right.
Where the house was.
Well, I had a barn jacked up, and we didn't, we had to build a new foundation to put it on, right?
Eventually.
Right, but they didn't have, they didn't bring cranes in or anything like that?
I mean, we're talking the matter of a week, so if you say, if you're uncomfortable with that, then you just say no, wait till after the pre-construction conference.
They may have already lined up a mover, but that's not our problem.
Well, but he was gonna wait till I got back to him after talking with the board tonight.
I mean, I, I guess I would be comfortable leaving it up to you, once you vet what they're proposing to do and make sure it doesn't impact any of our conditions and all that kind of stuff, right?
Okay.
I'll, I mean, I would be okay letting Karen?
That's fine, I agree.
But, but?
I agree.
Get them to walk you through the whole process, so we're not surprised, the neighbors aren't surprised, and all that kind of stuff.
Um, I have another question, and maybe it's a little late, but what did we come up with for, for a bond for?
We haven't yet.
We haven't yet.
You just have a condition that you're having a bond, they're working on an estimate.
Okay.
And all that has to be ironed out prior to actually starting construction, and, you know, there's a number of things that need to be happened in between?
Now and then.
Approval and then.
And we'll, we'll have an opportunity to get our own independent review of the bonds.
Yes, we're having, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so we have that happening, um, next time, we have two accessory dwellings, and we're gonna also have just kind of a brief discussion on the master plan process and open space plan.
Okay, that would be great.
Um, and, you know, we remain still very busy, um, you know, we got a site plan, um, application in for Roach Field, which will be in early June, and a site plan waiver for the Jacob Hatch Building, which will be in June, and we're still, um, the Drew Company still plans on filing soon.
Did they buy it?
Uh, they have till the end of June.
Ah, okay. Till the end of June to, to actually close the deal?
To act, to act on their P and S, I believe. I believe that's what I was told.
All right, and I heard?
Well, 28 is getting pretty close, that.
Um, I heard that Cumberland Farms bought the auto place down on the social auto parts?
Oh, really?
Yeah, and supposedly?
Gonna put a Starbucks there?
A Cumberland Farm and a gas station, but we don't allow gas stations in this town.
Ooh, really?
No, we don't.
No, no, I mean?
Really?
Really, that's what we want to put there?
No.
Gateway to Situate?
No, no, 1.2 million for that property.
Wow.
And then, um, there's a property for sale up in North Situate that used to be Dottie's Cleaners, that's on the market for over half a million dollars, and it has no septic system at all. And it's right next to the, what used to be the old Mobile Gas Station, and it may or may not have a 21E environmental issue with it as well. Plus, there are two apartments upstairs, and God knows where they came from.
One other thing I was, um, thinking about on, on Toll Brothers, that we can leave for another day, but, um, we should think about how we're gonna do sort of third-party inspections.
Right, we have to, right, we have, that definitely has to be talked about, um, they're gonna be?
We really should do it sort of as, sort of an omnibus thing, right, like a clerk at a works kind of thing, as opposed to, you know?
Right, it, right, that absolutely has to be hit on, they are also gonna be coming back with the revised A and R plan for that, based on, you know, now that they're practically all through Land Court with the revised numbers and everything, so you will be seeing another A and R for that.
Okay. And you're gonna, you're going to get the language finalized that we talked about tonight? That'll be the final version?
The final version, I will attempt to get it to you on Tuesday.
Yep.
And we have until the close of business on the 17th to file it with the town clerk.
Okay.
That was what you, we agreed upon last time.
Yep.
And so, the four of us need to trot in here and sign that?
No, we have all the signature things for you tonight.
Oh, boy, okay.
So we have, we have a little signing to do for the letters, the A and R, and the decision.
And since you mentioned Green Bush, just as a, a point that I think I asked Karen about last time, was that the Riverway, I know that, that guy never came in or never responded, so that's something that the board should follow up on eventually, I guess.
Well, I, I've been too busy to call him, and so, I mean, he's, he's back on the list next week to start, um?
No, no, district fiber.
To start, to start calling, because he said he was gonna check with the property owners, and, um, since, and that hasn't happened, so.
I'm just?
He's back on the list to, to call.
Yeah, pointing out, just since the, the master plan's going on, Green Bush, they're getting that, that'll make? Pointing out, just since the master plan's going on, Greenbush, that all makes sense, all these little pieces.
Right, everything, right.
And we have to update stormwater rigs, too?
Yes, that's on the agenda, too. We're having, we're having a meeting, we're having a couple meetings in May on that.
And elections are, what is it?
The 19th.
Saturday? And no one, as far as, there's, I think the paper said there was no one that's opposed? Or there's no races?
The last time this happened, something like 347 people voted. That's it.
Some of those are probably dead, then.
Probably.
That doesn't make the question I was... You always look for the silver lining, Bill. Should we be trying to still get an alternate to run for?
Oh, yes, right after.
Because otherwise, it always is a problem.
It is a problem. Yep.
Can we entertain Bill's motion, or do we have more to...
Yeah, no, I'm open.
You're open?
I'm open, yeah.
I'll second his motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.